Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the Burke County Board of Commissioners regular meeting for Tuesday, August the 19th, 2014. I'll call our meeting to order. I'd like to welcome every one of you here, and we have a good crowd, and I thank you for being here. I want to extend our get well wishes to Chairman Wayne Abley. He is still not with us tonight. I spoke to Wayne prior to coming to the meeting. He will be going back to Baptist Hospital for a doctor's appointment Monday of next week, and hopefully he will be able to get his pacemaker, which is now sitting on his shoulder, and get it back in close to his heart where it needs to go, and hopefully it works well. As a point of personal privilege, I wish you would join me in wishing a very happy, happy birthday to our county manager, Brian Steen, who has a hair over fifty-some years. He won't tell me exactly, so happy birthday. If you will join me, just say happy birthday to Brian.
Happy birthday.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you so very much. This time, I'd like to ask you to silence your mobile devices if you have anything with you, make sure they're turned off, and if you are a speaker tonight and move to the center table, if you would do as I'm doing right now, kind of get close to the mic and eat it up so Kay can get the recording very good. Our invocation and our pledge of allegiance tonight will be done, the invocation by Pastor Ron Cooper of the El Bethel Baptist Church, and our pledge of allegiance immediately after the invocation will be by Girl Scout Junior Troop 10139 with Karen Breedlove as the troop leader. So if you'll stand with me, and Pastor Cooper, if you'll come to the podium for the invocation, and just after the invocation is over with, if the Girl Scout troop will come forward, they can do the pledge of allegiance. Pastor Ron?
Let's bow together in prayer. Oh, Father, we just pause to calm ourselves, to accept your peace, your guidance, your direction. How wonderful it is to know that we bow before the God who is the Almighty, the God who spoke and brought this world into existence, and, Lord, to know that you're the one who put all the stars in the sky, and you know them by name, just as you know each one of us by name, and, Lord, you have a purpose for our lives. And I thank you for these county commissioners, Lord, for what a privilege it is to live in the city of Morganton and be in Burke County. And, Father, we just ask that you would give direction, that you'd give boldness, you'd give guidance, Lord, that we would seek you above everything else, and, Lord, that we would let our lives count for you, that we would realize we're here for a purpose. And, Father, we thank you for that, and we thank you that you so loved us that you gave your one and only Son, Jesus, to come into this world and die for our sins. And we give you praise, and we thank you that according to your power and promise, that on the third day he was resurrected so that we could have everlasting life. And, Father, we just, again, we thank you for this county, thank you for these workers, thank you for all that you're doing right here in Burke County, and we just ask, Lord, in a special way, that you'd bless our schools as the school board and teachers and principals and assistant principals, everyone begins back to work, and we just pray that you'd bless and that this would be a tremendous year for our students. And we thank you for all that you're doing. What a great God you are. We love you, and we ask this now in Jesus' wonderful name. Amen.
Amen. All right, if our Girl Scouts come forward.
Attention, salute, pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unbroken, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ladies, if y'all standing right there, we'd like to come down and take a picture, and you will find your picture hanging on the wall within the week, okay? Thank you. Okay, let's give these girls a big applause. This time, I'd like to recognize Dr. Michael Helmick. Dr. Helmick, if you're here, if you'll stand up for me. Dr. Michael Helmick is the new president of Western Piedmont Community College, and this is his first visit with us as a Board of Commissioners. Dr. Helmick, we welcome you, and if there's anything that we can do for Western Piedmont besides changing the budget at this point, we'd be more than welcome to help you. But again, we thank you. You're filling big shoes, Dr. Jim, but we know you can do that. Is there anything you'd like to say for a moment? You can step forward.
Well, I appreciate Mr. Carswell, the recognition. I am here on behalf of the community college, and my basic philosophy is don't show up at a meeting when, just when you want something, and so I will be back again. But it's a pleasure to meet all of you before the meeting. At the college, we are pledged to serve the needs of the community, especially those workforce training needs that are going to be coming up. I am thrilled to be back in Burke County. For those of you that don't know, I was here before as the vice president for academic affairs, so coming back as the president is very much like coming home. But I'm looking forward to working with the county commission. You all are a big supporter of the college. I know that, and I appreciate your support, so thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Helmick. Let's give Dr. Helmick a good hand. Moving on to item number four, approval of the meeting minutes. Gentlemen, we have minutes from June the 14th, 2010, a budget work session premiered by Doris Smith. We have minutes from June 17th, 2014, or 2014, a regular meeting, July the 1st, 2014, a pre-agenda meeting, and July the 1st, 2014, a special meeting. We also need to approve technical corrections for March the 16th, 2010, at a regular meeting, November the 30th, 2010, at a special meeting, and we need to improve insertion of agendas into official minute book in lieu of the minute meetings for February the 16th, 2010 work session, March the 5th, 2010, budget presentation meeting, and April the 12th, 2010, Board of Commissioners, Board of Education, joint meeting. Gentlemen, we've had these minutes for a good while, and I hope you've had an opportunity to look over everything, and I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, incidentally, the one that witnessed all these meetings is absent tonight, and that's what made me with you. But I believe, you know, we have corrected a couple, and I believe as they are, they have been corrected and edited as far as dates, and I make a motion, and I'm assuming you want one for all the minutes, that they be approved.
All right, you heard the motion by Maynard to approve everything that I've read on the approval of the minutes agenda. Are there any questions or discussion? All in favor, signify by raising your right hand. Madam Clerk, it'll be four to zero. Moving to item number five, approval of the agenda as amended, the addition of presentations for introductions of our new Assistant Director, Patrick McCoy, presented by Rhonda Lee, and remove decision, item number two, the regional jail facility closing agreement.
So moving, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion by Maynard to approve the agenda as amended. All in favor, signify by raising your right hands. Four to nothing, Madam Clerk. Moving on to our presentations, our first presentation will be from the Sheriff's Office, the recognition of Lieutenant David Charles South for the advanced law enforcement certification presented by Sheriff Steve Whitson. Sheriff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I'd first like to thank my pastor, Ron Cooper, for delivering that prayer. I've got all kinds of El Bethelites. I saw four of the kids go to El Bethel Church that was up here with the Girl Scouts, but got plenty of our church members here. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the opportunity to recognize our officers that are receiving the advanced law enforcement certificate tonight. Lieutenant David Charles South has thirteen and a half years of law enforcement combined between Valdez Police Department, Catawba County Sheriff's Office, and the Burke County Sheriff's Office. In 2000, Lieutenant South was awarded the Basic Law Enforcement Training Certificate from Western Piedmont Community College. He was promoted to lieutenant over the jail and courthouse in May 2013. He has over seventeen hundred hours of law enforcement training. I would like to read a letter from our Attorney General regarding this law enforcement certificate. Dear Officer South, I extend my most sincere congratulations to you on award of this advanced professional certificate and honor which it bestows upon you. As a recipient of this prestigious award, you have placed yourself among the elite of law enforcement officers in the state of North Carolina. I commend you for your commitment to law enforcement professionalism. Display your certificate with pride as it represents your outstanding contributions and achievements as a representative of your department and as a justice officer in the state's criminal justice system. With kindest regards, I remain very truly yours, Roy Cooper, our Attorney General. So I'd like to recognize Lieutenant South, if he would come forward.
Thank you, Lieutenant South, for what you do to the Sheriff's Office and citizens in Burke County. We appreciate your service.
Thanks, sir.
Ladies and gentlemen, if you'll join me in your appreciation. Thank you, Sheriff. Item number two, I'd like to recognize Rhonda Lee, our Human Resources Director, for an introduction of our new HR Assistant Director, Patrick McCoy. McCoy, excuse me.
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. First of all, I want to thank you for approving this position during the 14-15 budget process, and I'm very pleased to introduce our new Assistant HR Director, Mr. Patrick McCoy. Patrick comes to Burke County with an extensive background in human resources. He recently served as a Director of Human Resources for Appalachian State University. Prior to joining ASU, he worked as the Assistant HR Managing Partner for the NC Office of State Human Resources, where he worked with the development and implementation of the state's new classification and compensation system. He also served as the Program Team Leader for local government program services for all DSS and public and mental health agencies in the state. We are very fortunate and pleased that Patrick has joined our team, and we look forward to his contributions in areas such as classification and compensation, supervisory and employee training, and health and safety and compliance. So this is Patrick.
Thank you, Rhonda. I'm Patrick McCoy. It's a pleasure to be you, to be here today, and I'm honored and grateful to serve in this position, serve and be part of the Burke County team, and so I look forward to getting to work. Thank you.
Thank you, Patrick. Patrick, on behalf of the Board of Commissioners, we welcome you to Burke County, and we've been waiting a long time for you, and I know Rhonda and her staff has too, so thank you very much for accepting that position. Moving on to item number seven, our scheduled public hearings. Our first public hearing is Economic Development Grant Match for Building Reuse and Restoration Grants for Richelieu Legwear and a Public Hearing presented by Brian Steen County Manager. Ron?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As you're aware, the company is coming or has a place here in Burke County, and they're needing to do some renovation to a building in order to move forward with their expansion. It's a $500,000 building, U.S. Building Reuse and Restoration Grant from the North Carolina Department of Commerce, Rural Economic Development Division. As required by that grant, we have to hold a public hearing regarding that, and Scott Dornell is here, as well as somebody from the company. Scott, do you want to make any remarks before they open their public hearing?
Yes, sir.
While he's coming to the podium, we are sharing the local grant match with the town of Hildebrand, as has been the practice here in Burke County when a company is in a town. So we'd share half of the local match with that town. So it's a 12-5 for us and 12-5 for Hildebrand.
Thank you. If you recall, Governor McCrory announced this project back in June. Part of the agreement was a new provision in the building reuse grant, as Brian explained. That was passed a couple of weeks ago with the legislature, and Secretary Mitchell with the Department of Commerce expedited the application, and the last piece of this, as the county manager explained, is passing the resolution tonight. Two representatives from the company, Elena Azarita and John Rhodes, are with us, and would love for them to say a few comments about the project and answer any questions.
Thanks, Scott. Good evening. My name's John Rhodes. I'm in charge of the site restoration and of running the site once it's built. This is Elena, and Elena is the HR Director. So for those of you that aren't aware, we basically are taking a look at the old-new buildability on effects of 119 in Hildebrand. We're looking to restore the site and then bring back manufacturing. This is part of the Bringing Back Manufacturing to the United States Initiative. The target right now is that we'll be in production in December, and once we're complete, it's about a two- to three-year timeline, we're looking to bring about 200 jobs back to Burke County. The building restoration project itself will be a significant boon to business areas, areas in the business, including some of the contractors we're working with to kind of rebuild the site. So we're very excited for anybody who's interested. We have a job fair on September 18th. We're looking for about 90 people to hire the next two months, so there's some flyers right here, and we certainly appreciate the support from the county that gave Richelieu the opportunity to look at Burke County as one of the sites because there's multiple sites to set this site up. So thank you. Is there any questions I can answer?
Do you want to let your HR Director speak for a moment?
We're very excited about this opportunity. We, I've been in the hosiery business for 26 years, and to bring these jobs back to the county is exciting. We've started to bring people in already as we speak in terms of applicants and that type of thing, people that have moved out of the area or moved into other industries and are eager to get back started, so we're very excited about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Gentlemen, anybody having questions for either one of the presenters?
Just to comment, I'm just so appreciative that you're here. We're happy you're here, and the almost 100 jobs is going to do wonders for Burke County, and I hope they do a good job for you. We appreciate you coming to Burke County.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, ma'am. Madam Clerk, this time I'm going to open the public hearing for the Economic Development Grant Match for Building Reuse and Restoration Grants for Richelieu Legwear and Legwear. Is anyone here like to speak to the issue? Madam Clerk, I'm going to close the hearing. Any other comments or questions or concerns about this grant reuse? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Chairman, I move to appropriate the $12,500 of general fund to balance for the county to share the local grant match, and also move to adopt Resolution 2014-16.
And?
And move to approve a grant administration contract with the Western Piedmont Council of Governments. If a grant award is received, authorize the chairman to execute the contract on behalf of the board, subject to review and/or revision by the county attorney.
Now, gentlemen, you've heard the motion by Jeff. Any other comments or questions? If not, all in favor, raise your right hands. That would be four to nothing, Madam Clerk. Thank you so very much. Moving on to item number two is the Community Development Vested Rights Extension Request for ZMA 2004-05, East Lake Plan Residential Mixed Use Conditional District PRMU-CD Development Ordinance presented by Scott Carpenter, our Deputy County Manager and Planning Director.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Board members. This is a request from Crescent Communities, who 10 years ago had a PRMU Conditional District Ordinance approved, which is 2004-05 zoning map amendment, and at that time, there were six parcels that were a part of the original request. Two of those parcels have been taken out of the request because one was given to the county in the form of a county park, and the other one was Dry Creek, which has since been developed. That left four parcels, and they're known as East Lake Track 2, 3, 5, and 6. The total acreage of these properties is 668 acres, and Crescent has previously requested two other extensions, which totaled eight years. In addition, the state legislature, after the fall of the housing market, extended vested rights for two additional years, which came out to 10 years. So there's been a total of 10 years since this was originally approved. The latest extension of vested rights was to expire in March 2014. This request does not propose any changes to the original zoning request that was approved in 2004. The ordinance contains lower densities and more stringent environmental conditions than the underlying zoning district would require. Staff does recommend approval of the vested rights extension due to the enhanced environmental conditions. Staff also recommends that no future extensions be approved unless there is progress on at least one of the parcels over this five-year extension that's being requested. The planning board heard this matter at its June 26, 2014, public meeting, and they voted four to zero to recommend that the Board of Commissioners consider approving the five-year vested right request. And Crescent does have a representative here who would like to address the board before taking questions.
Granted.
Thank you very much, Scott. You always do such a good job of presenting this. I don't really have anything to add. I'll just remain up here if there's any questions that you may have with this extension request.
Gentlemen, any questions?
I think we asked most of them pre-agenda.
I think we're going to let you slide tonight. All right. Madam Clerk, I'm going to open the public hearing. If there's anyone here to speak to the vested rights extension request for ZMA 2004-2005. Madam Clerk, no one is here. The public hearing is closed. Is there any other further discussion regarding this matter? If not, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make the motion to approve the five-year vested rights extension request for the planned residential mixed-use conditional district development ordinance associated with ZMA 2004-05, East Lake Track Number 2, pin numbers 1755140069, East Lake Track 3, pin number 1755435201, East Lake Track Number 5, pin number 1754898615, and East Lake Track 6, pin number 1764087050. No future extensions shall be granted unless Crescent Communities has made significant progress towards developing the above-mentioned tracks.
Motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt the zoning consistency statement.
All right, everyone's heard the motion by Maynard. All in favor, please signify by raising your right hand. Be four to nothing, Madam Clerk. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Scott. Thank you, sir. Moving on to item number three, Community Development Zoning Text Amendment, ZTA 2014-01, Deputy County Manager and Planning Director, Scott Carpenter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is a text amendment that has been initiated by staff. North Carolina statutes set out special mandates that must be observed by cities and counties in adopting, amending, or repealing ordinances that involve land development regulations. Government Statutes 153A 323 establishes the statute requirements for public hearings involving proposed land use decisions. At one time, the statutes did require that planning boards hold public hearings and follow the same requirements as the governing body. However, this is no longer the case. Planning boards are no longer required to hold public hearings, but they may hold a public hearing in the course of preparing the ordinance. Government Statute 153A 344 requires that planning boards meet and discuss land use issues, including zoning-related matters, and make written recommendations to the governing body prior to holding a public hearing and making a legislative decision. So this request is that the proposed staff-initiated zoning text amendment is to bring Article 16, Administrative Remedies of the Zoning Ordinance, in line with current state statute requirements, and to help alleviate unnecessary added expenses to the community development budget. And as I believe I described and told you in our pre-agenda meeting, that when we have to advertise four times for public hearings, it substantially adds 250 or more dollars to our advertising for a meeting, and the meetings are still run in about the same manner as they would be without that particular requirement. There's two parts to this request. So the first one, pardon me, first part of the amendment is Section 1601.02, 2, creating other use districts and/or changes between other use districts. So Section 16.0101 reads that the planning board shall consider the proposed amendment after notice and a public hearing in accordance with North Carolina General Statute 153A 323 as amended, and shall present its recommendations in writing to the Board of Commissioners. We recommend that this sentence read, "The planning board may hold a public hearing and shall consider the proposed amendment in accordance with North Carolina General Statute 153A 344 as amended, and shall present its recommendations in writing to the Board of Commissioners." The second thing we would like to do is in that paragraph, we would like to add one additional sentence for clarification, and it will read, "The Board of Commissioners shall consider the proposed zoning district creation or change after notice and a public hearing in accordance with North Carolina General Statute 153A 323A as amended." The second part of this is an amendment is to Section 1601.02, which deals with text amendments, and it currently reads, "Proposals to adopt, amend, or repeal the text of this ordinance, whether initiated by the Board of Commissioners or the planning board, shall be treated in accordance with the North Carolina General Statute Section 153A 323A as amended, and the following process." We would like to change that sentence to read, "Proposals to adopt, amend, or repeal the text of this ordinance shall be treated in accordance with the following process." One is, "The planning board shall consider a proposed text amendment after notice and a public hearing, and shall present its recommendations to the Board of Commissioners." We would like to clarify that sentence like we did the other sentence under Section 160101 to read, "The planning board may hold a public hearing and shall consider a proposed text amendment in accordance with North Carolina General Statute 153A 344A." And again, at the end of that paragraph, we would like to add, for clarification, that the Board of Commissioners shall consider the proposed zoning text amendment after notice and a public hearing, and in accordance with North Carolina General Statute 153A 323A as amended. For physical budgetary effect, this will not have any negative effect. As a matter of fact, it will help the community development department's advertising budget. For recommendation, staff does recommend and request the Board of Commissioners to approve this text amendment to Sections 1601.012 and 1601.02 of the zoning ordinance. The planning board did meet on June 26, 2014, and they voted four-zero. I also recommend that the Board of Commissioners consider approving this text amendment. We also do have a statement of zoning consistency that you gentlemen will also need to adopt as a separate motion, and I will read that at this time. The proposed amendment is more consistent with the North Carolina state statutes for recommendations of planning boards and decisions of boards of commissioners. The proposed amendment is reasonable and in the public interest in that this proposed amendment will make the zoning ordinance more consistent with North Carolina General or North Carolina state statute 153A 344, and significantly reduce the community development advertising budget.
All right, gentlemen, you've heard the presentation by Scott. Does anybody have any questions and/or comments?
Mr. Chairman, Scott, this is more or less to come in compliance with new rules, and it ought to streamline a little bit and make it a little bit easier for everybody. Is that correct?
That is correct, sir, and it also still keeps in place the allowance to have a public hearing on items that are considered controversial or special interest, items where the public has a lot of anxiety about, and we would still conduct a public hearing. As far as the planning board meetings go, they would be run the same way, so when the public comes, they will still be heard just like they are today.
All right, anything else for Scott? Okay, what's the pleasure of the board?
Had a public hearing.
Oh, pardon me. Madam Clerk, I'm now going to open the public hearing. Is anyone here to speak to text amendment ZTA 2014-01? Sign on, the public hearing is closed. Now, let's go back and see what the pleasure of the board is.
Chairman, I move to adopt zoning consistency statement and adopt ordinance number 2014-10.
Gentlemen, you heard the motion by Jeff. All in favor, signify by raising your right hands. That would be four to nothing, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Scott.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Moving on to- Moving on to item eight. Madam Clerk, has anyone signed up for informal public comments?
No cards.
Thank you, ma'am. Moving on to item number nine is the consent agenda. At this time, I'll recognize County Manager Brian Steen.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, you have a 12-item consent agenda. First is BCA CD, proclamation declaring September 2014 is National Recovery Month. Item two, clerk, acceptance of CDBG progress reports submitted by Western Piedmont Council of Government. Item three, clerk, designation of chair for the Tourism Development Authority. Item four, clerk, appointment to council on aging. Item five, clerk, reappointment to Parks and Recreation Commission. Item six, Community Development Department, zoning text amendment ZTA 2013-06 Corrections Ordinance. Item seven, Finance Department, amendment to FY 14-15 Budget Ordinance for Personnel Correction. Item eight, Fire Marshal, request for approval of a lease-purchase agreement between United Financial of North Carolina Incorporated and George Hildebrand Fire and Rescue Department Incorporated. Item nine, Health Department, project Lazarus funds, $2,500. Item 10, Tax Office EMS Collections Report for June 2014. Item 11, Tax Office, Tax Release, Refund, and VTS Report for June and July 2014. And item 12, Tax Office, order to collect taxes for 2014 and settlement report.
Thank you, Brian. Any questions for Brian on the consent agenda? What's the pleasure of the board on the consent agenda?
It will be approved, Mr. Chairman.
Heard the motion by Jeff. All in favor, signify by raising your right hands. Be four to nothing, Madam Clerk. Moving on to our items for decision. The first item tonight is from the county manager concerning a memorandum of understanding with the Burke County Public Schools for provision of a drug dog. County Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Members of the board, you may remember in pre-agenda that we had originally brought this to you and we had a price and a funding of $5,000 from Burke County Public Schools to purchase a dog and pay for the training of an officer. Since our pre-agenda, we've been informed that the dog that was originally considered for purchase has been bought and they are looking at another dog. And this time, and these are technical terms, the schools are not looking to get a pointed ear dog like a German Shepherd or Malinois. They are interested in a Labrador Retriever that would likely exceed the $5,000. So, the MOU between the county and the Board of Education was revised to reflect that the Burke County Public Schools will provide one-time payment for the purchase of a drug dog and training for the officer and handler. Since we don't know the exact amount, again, the money will be coming from the Burke County Public School system. And that, since there was that change, I did feel like it needed to be brought to your attention and be handled as a separate decision item.
All right, any questions for Brian?
I have a question. Does the Sheriff's Department have dogs, canine already, don't they?
They have one that is purely the Sheriff's Department's dog. I believe it's just one, isn't it correct?
We've got the bloodhound and we've got a pointed ear dog. Both of those are lost. They're not in the county.
How are they trained for, for what?
Steve, just come on up to podium and we'll just go ahead and take some questions. Captain Robinson, do you need to come up also?
The question is, the existing canine you have now, how are they trained for what? In a particular area?
The bloodhound is solely trained just to track suspects or lost people or so forth. The pointed ear dog, it's a shepherd and it's trained for what we call general purpose. It does tracking and also does narcotics and it also is a bite dog. If we have a situation where somebody's attacking an officer, that dog would defend the officer. So, it's, it does all the duties.
Well, they, would these be working with the officer within the school?
No, those won't be used. And if you remember in pre-agenda, we talked about that. The schools wanted a Labrador for the school and we agreed. We thought that was a great idea. In fact, when I was at the sheriff's conference, I talked to a vendor there and he recommended a Labrador. And they actually have some Labradors, so we may be able to get one relatively quick.
Okay, thank you.
All right, any other questions or comments?
Mr. Chairman, just for the record, this is an ounce of prevention, more than a pound of cure, is that correct? And hopefully that it will create some, a little bit of resistance for some.
Yes, sir.
Nothing 11 on the school grounds, that's the way I'm going to put it.
Yes, sir. I think that, and again, I mentioned in pre-agenda, I think this is going to be a significant deterrent factor for our schools and with our ballgames. When people know that there could be a canine at a ballgame or any school function and knowing that that canine will be looking for narcotics, I think that's going to be a significant deterrent. I think that we will reduce the amount of drugs that's brought onto our school campuses and to our ballgames.
Anything else for the sheriff or Captain Robinson? Okay, what's the pleasure of the board?
Chairman, I move to approve the memorandum of understanding offered by the Burke County Public Schools for provision of a drug dog and authorize the county manager to execute the agreement on behalf of the board.
All right, gentlemen, you've heard the motion by Jeff. All in favor, signify by raising your right hands. Madam Clerk, that will be four to nothing. Thank you, Sheriff. Thank you, Captain.
Thank you, sir.
Item number two under our items for decision is our county manager regarding the regional jail facility closing agreement. Commander?
That had been removed.
We did remove that. I'm sorry, that was not being removed off of my sheet. My fault.
We don't have any idea when it will be brought back?
We should have that in our next meeting, sir.
Okay.
And Brian, if we can say, I think we did that more courtesy Jack to Catawba County to get, let them do some finalization with some folks down there.
Their county manager's been out of town for the past two weeks and he asked me if it all possible if we could do that, so I'm trying to do that.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Kay, that I messed that up. I forgot to mark it off of mine. Moving on to item number 11, reports and comments from the board and our staff. Let's start down on the right-hand side with county attorney.
I don't have any comments. I have a few, actually. Want to just let you know about the broadband project. The county staff is working with the representatives of the North Carolina Department of Commerce to identify and evaluate what they call vertical assets that could be used to assist in the build-out for more broadband. It will take them a little bit of time to evaluate whether the assets we have here would work and how they are strategically placed in the county. But I did want to let you know that that's what's going on with that. EMS station number seven construction site is to grade and I saw them out today. They were, it looked like surveying and placing the corners of the building and I'm hoping that they'll move forward shortly to go ahead and dig and start pouring footings. Also, EMS was recently featured in the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners' County Lines Newsletter regarding the training of our paramedics and the special ops teams that we have that is used on many occasions to do rescues from the Linnville Gorge and other extreme areas. And I do want to also let you know that I had a brief conversation with our EMS manager and he was telling me that, you know, as currently, we do have a crew operating out of the temporary station and they recently received a call regarding a heart attack victim. I believe he said that they were able to get to the call within two minutes. And had they been coming from the original EMS station one at the hospital, that it's doubtful that the outcome would have been as positive as it was. And I will be asking the EMS director to prepare an informational memo regarding this and I'll share that with the board as soon as I receive it. But a lot of good news and I believe that in the September edition of the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Newsletter, they will also feature our 911 facility. So, getting a lot of statewide attention.
Thank you, sir. Mayor?
I'd just like to say we had another excellent clean water and air training and convention in Hickory at Lenore Runne College. Had 115 to sign up. I believe it was somewhere between 86, 88 that actually attended. Some of our own conducted some of the classes and did a superb job, Scott being that one. Also want to wish for the students and teachers and faculty that as they get ready to go back to school, they have a great year and want to wish Brian another 39th birthday.
Thank you, sir.
All right, Jeff?
I have no comment, Mr. Chairman.
Jack?
None.
Adam Clerk?
I'm good, thank you.
Thank you so much. Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to report and I'd like to thank Brian and Maynard for going with me to the North Carolina County Commissioners Association Annual Conference. Ronnie Bill from Macon County, if you don't know Ronnie, we are very fortunate to have him as the new president of the association. The one thing that I did learn is y'all is singular and all y'all is plural. So, you know what our, what our president is going to be like. Brenda Howerton stepped up and was elected to the second vice president slot and the other folks advanced into different slots. I had the opportunity to attend a great announcement on tourism today along with Mayor Cohen. Burke County, for the first time, has made the list into tourism. We had a greater percentage of achievement as far as tourism-related jobs in Burke County, falling right in behind Buncombe County. And also, dollars spent put us in the top of that frame too. So, I can't remember the exact percentage, but that's the first time we've ever made this list for tourism. So, very proud of Ed Phillips and what he's done in the tourism market. He has taken on the challenge that I gave him and he's taken on the new challenge to even pull us up higher. But it's really, really great when you fall in behind Buncombe County who just has a lot of tourism in their area. I also today attended the groundbreaking for the new Applebee's along with the manager Steen at, in our new shopping mall out there. And this is a very unique Applebee's. It will be, it's called a gold Applebee's. It's going to have a porch outside area at Applebee's and the outside porch will be facing towards Table Rock and Hawksbill. So, it'll be an outside area that'll seat about 40 and the inside area will seat around 200. And it's going to be a very large building and it won't be cramped like some of the smaller Apples, Applebee's that maybe you have been to before. I'd like to remind everybody that the Burke County Fair is back in Burke County and it will start next week, if I'm not badly mistaken, right, Miss Kay?
August 26.
26. 26. So, encourage you to go to the county fair. And that will be all I have. Madam Clerk, how about our vacancy announcements?
Yes, sir. Currently, we have the following vacancies on county boards and committees. Hickory Regional Planning Commission, Adult Care Home Community Advisory Committee, Nursing Home Community Advisory Committee, Juvenile Crime Prevention Council, Burke County Planning Board, Library Board of Trustees, Morganton Board of Adjustment for the ETJ, Voluntary Agricultural District Board, Industrial Revenue Bond Board, Burke County Parks and Recreation Commission, and the Child Protection and Child Fatality Prevention Team.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. And for those that are watching by internet, again, on behalf of the county commissioners, we encourage you to take advantage of these councils and these committees. This county cannot function without these committees and we would, we're short some people and we would encourage you to take advantage of these committees and join if you could. To preserve the attorney-client privilege and discuss threat and or pending litigation, discuss economic development matters, and discuss personnel matters authorized by NCGS 143-318.11, Paragraph A, 3, 4, and 6, I will need a motion to go in closed session.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. All in favor? Four to zero. Let's take about a five-minute break and then we will move into closed session. Phew, I'm telling you. That's the first time Kay's not had to put her sweat. Well, she does have her sweater on.
It's snowing out here. It's raining out here. We said it.
They always use their blanket out here.
We had a proper motion to come out of closed session. We're now back in section. I'd like to report that no action was taken that is reportable at this time. It's a pleasure of the board to adjourn. So moved? So moved, all in favor. See you next time.